So you got one? Is that the current?
Do you know where you have to extend all of them? What we're being sorry, right there at the top, we don't have the floors and things. People around. Good, because we have a whole bunch of kids. I don't really call them except they do. Oh, trying to get more. Then again, where is the building? Oh, okay. Oh, that's what it's gonna say?
Did you get them to split the different?
Okay.
Mattresses, excuse me mattresses. I said tired tonight, I still think you're tired.
Is that some six o'clock over there?
Yeah. You get it though?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Take a motion on minutes for our last meeting. Why you think?
Motion to approve.
A discussion?
We could just add on 5.4. There was numbers asked for, for the transfer station fees. Can we annotate what those were in the minutes? And then what we settled on is in there, just for record.
Yes.
Do I have anything else?
All right. All over the favor. I just missed to the agenda.
Uh, yes, so two quick things. Uh, one, 5.9 of agent number 90, speaking to the assessing agent. Uh, we've had some new information come in, asking to table that please. And then secondly, Mr. Knightley is here. He would like to revisit the fee discussion if the board is open to it at the transfer station. However, he'd like to handle that.
Ed, you know, talking about already now?
Yeah.
Let's do it.
As we, we already decided in the last one of the meetings, we're going to, if the value reserves are gonna change their prices. I went back through what we've taken in at the transfer station in the last year. And as far as it's budgeted, well, the transfer station taking in funds is $45,000, $75. And we took in $83,000, so we're, we're to the $38,000 plus. I'm hearing a lot of complaints, a lot of negative activity of my fee raising operation. And they told me this was just for me and all this and all that. I'd like to go back to the $200. And we'll just, we'll just keep an eye on it and see if, see how it goes. As far as demolition. And we're gonna go up on the mattresses. We went to 12, it's at 12.50 because of the 50 cent. We went to 12. Um, and just see, see how it goes. And we'll just keep an eye on it. I mean, like I said, last, last year we made $38 next to what was budgeted for the demolition.
Was the board think of that?
What did the rates go up to?
When we went from two to four, they were gonna double as of, as of.
No, no, what we're being charged.
We went from 135 to 165, so it's $30 more a ton. But we're making up the difference on the mattresses by half.
Cause they're charging us $25 a mattress.
That's what they're supposed to be. I haven't found it on my slip yet in this last two loads, but I know those mattresses in there.
I didn't obtain a motion to reschedule if everybody felt that's the way to do.
What was the mattresses before?
I'm honest.
She's saying you want to leave the mattresses.
I'm leaving the mattress the same. I just wanna change the demolition. Now I'll be back to $200. So I don't know. I've watched the people come in this last four or five days and I mean, we come in with 480 miles, it's $58. It's gonna be $96 the next time they come in. They ain't gonna be able to pay. I'm not sure if you wanna find the size of those.
I'll make the motion to let, on the demo, back to the original $200 per ton.
So here, second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor are attaining the thing?
Thank you. The other thing, the, uh, the replay building showed up today. They, they go over that, the D E P, we did when we ran. I know you guys, I don't know if you heard about the $10,000 grant we was awarded, we bought the building. And we're doing today, so we'll start working on that.
That's a swap and shop thing.
Right.
Oh, that's good.
Jay, do you have any other public comment?
Oh. Now.
Do your job.
I don't know what I did with it. No, I guess not. It was one thing, but I told it good. It's toys.
It's on your shelves. On your chair next to you.
Well, I thought, why? I didn't, that's the registration. I don't know what I did with it, but anyway.
You're good?
If I take it, I'm good.
Okay.
Uh, if you go on this, um, on this, like, tonnage, um, if you made 38, if you made $38,000 last year.
But he was saying overall.
Yeah, I, I was saying that. Well, I mean, you could take a chance and you made a profit, so it goes. I mean, you're gonna use, obviously gonna use up your product because every price from 1935. But I had people feel and then you get, you know, in the streets and out on the roads and then you have to pick it up. I mean, it's a trade off. It might make people feel better, I guess, if they have to pay the charge right. It's a fun add.
Yeah. We gotta make everybody happy.
I think make, using the words that we made a $38,000 profits probably not, not super accurate.
That's in demolition, that's what we collected.
But we probably spent that. It's not a money making business.
Okay. Any other comment? All right, business items. Uh, how do we wanna do these abairments? Do we wanna go down through each one or do we wanna take them as a?
I make a motion to deny business item 5.1 and 5.2. Those are the two denials based on the assessing agent's recommendation.
Second?
Here, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Now on the other ones that she has fought.
I make a motion to approve 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8, and 5.10.
Will you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Assessing update.
Your, uh. Hi. Um, in general, a basement specifically, what would you like to hear?
That they're overdone?
How you doing, I guess?
Um, well, a little.
The list is getting better?
I, I think the list is much better. We're down to the handful.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a couple of them have turned out to be problematic to sell. I'm having trouble identifying the camp on Marshall Farm. The owner says we have the wrong camp that isn't able to help us identify with the right camp. So, um, I'm literally kind of stuck. I've been sending out letters to local property owners saying, do you know who owns this camp? Kind of thing. So far, nothing useful.
Who, we're talking the one that we had all the trouble with?
No, no, this is a different Marshall Farm. So in her abatement request, she also said, this is not my camp. And so I said, okay, so whose camp is it? And she said she didn't know. Um, and so I said, do you have any pictures of your camp? And I had pictures of all of them. And she said, no. So, um, I started sending out letters to other local people to see if they can be more helpful in identifying whose camp this is. Because if her camp isn't correct, then someone else's isn't and no one else has spoken up. So I'm trying, so it's kind of hard to work that out. It takes a little time to send out letters and wait for responses and things. Um, another one was on hold because they provided an abatement, um, application, but did not give me what I considered to be sufficient information for me to make the change that they wanted. So that's another one on hold. I don't know how long it's gonna take. The others, I'm just working my way through and they're pretty shaky so far. Do you have the, yeah, okay. So that's where we're at.
I'm sure the board noticed. I didn't notice it first, but Oliver, toes and stuff are at the top of the front page.
Yep. So top of the page is not a good place to put those things.
Well, for me, cause I had to go start adding them up on my own, so.
Well, we knew that we would have these. I don't know if we knew we'd have this many, but.
I don't think we knew we'd have this many.
No, no.
So I think the nature of how they, um, created the data led us to some accuracy issues that, that resulted in a lot of the abairments. They were just kind of data entry error.
Yeah.
We're hoping to avoid that issue. We are avoiding it this year.
I like the way you're doing it.
We actually start testing the bridge between the two software applications tomorrow.
Yeah, that's pretty exciting news. The, the bridge for data between assess pro and, um.
Trio.
And trio. So when we go to commitment, there's gonna be less data entry because it'll do it somewhat automatically if you will.
Yeah, we're just gonna foster a while, you know?
Yeah.
Add one system into another. So literally we get that delivered to us tomorrow and we start testing.
Somebody else have any other questions?
I'll make up answers.
All right. I'll move on to the sewer update. You can come up, you come a little closer.
So, um, I don't know guys what to tell you. Uh, Adam was probably informed about the progress of the program, which means people like to be sewers, so there's no doubt of it. Um, Adam died like he was servicing our pump stations. He pumped out like almost like one and a half ton of solids with the sewer injuries later and other stuff. So it all went like on the center and then fell. Uh, we've, today we picked up the crane, so we hope to install it on the truck, um, next week or like two weeks. Um, we have a new inspector, GP inspector. We will be meeting her and permit writer, uh, on the 12th of August. So we'll see. I mean, I, I'm not afraid of anything. That's it. I mean, I'm gonna comply as completely. Uh, we finished proficiency testing. It's an E P A required once a year procedure like on the blood, blood sample. So it's done and I was going to be able to upload the results this or next year to the E P A. Um, that's pretty much it. Everything's running fine.
How, how many new customers have you picked up? Seems like a lot of places.
That's, Adam can answer that too.
So as far as the grants, we've had 21 grant applications. I think all but five are connected. There's five still pending.
Well, one's at work today.
Yeah.
325 plus, uh, something was working there, so.
Yeah. So, but we've continued to meet, not every week, but close to every. We miss one once in a while because of schedule stuff, but we've been meeting once a week and, uh, with Zenia Fin, in finance. And, uh, we've been working through it.
Yeah, so, so far I have to talk to, to the town engineer about three holes. It was very too high to me.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, he recommended that, that project should come, come back to us in a little.
Yeah. Yeah, the engineer's been very helpful with keeping things realistic.
Yes, you will.
So that, but it does appear that that's brought up some.
I mean, I, I, I think so. I mean, that's 21 connections that we wouldn't have had before. Um, I think that we've got another month, two months to go before we hit the one year mark. And I think given that point, we've given people plenty of opportunity. But we'll have, when we hit that mark, we'll have another discussion and see how you guys would like to proceed at that point, so.
Seven go? So, yep.
Just one question. How many total tools, how many total sewer connections do we have?
16 plus 15.
68 plus 15?
Yeah. Total, well, physical connections. So it's 78, 77.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, was any? I guess we'll let you off the hook.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
Tom managers report now, Dave.
All right, so just a handful of things. So one, Sharon Chimes, our finance director, is giving me her notice. She'll be with us for another 30 days. Uh, so I have posted that position. She has, however, agreed to stay on part time to help us train the, whomever the new person is, which I am appreciative of. I also received another retirement notice as well. Um, Wendy will be retiring at the first of the year, so we'll enjoy Wendy for the, as much Wendy time as we have left. And then, uh, let's see. Hogan and Whitney Pond, the grade controls. We've made lots of progress over the last, uh, since the last meeting. We've been able to, I think I told you guys, you know, you guys approved me to move forward with the Pratt. So we've been working with Pratt. We've been working on some other things. I've got the contract in my hands. I just got it right before I walked in here. I'm gonna be signing that so then we can get that cooking along. So lots of progress there, which is good. Thompson Lake Dam, I was over there with Rob Prue, the engineer. One of the things that we've talked about is the retaining wall. That's been a point that's needed to be addressed. I had him, uh, looking at the retaining wall with Jim and I. And he's gonna be giving me some estimates on how to shore that up and what the best way to go above that is. I will report back to you guys with that. The transfer station, uh, since Rob was here, a couple of board members and I have talked about the idea of, uh, there's been, two things have been discussed. The containers for demo being at that, where they, that place that looks like they used to be, you know, off of the side. And then also the idea of putting them in the middle and building a ramp. So Rob Prue is confirmed and discussed with the, with D E P. The cans cannot go where that, that hollowed out place is because it's within the setback for the old asbestos storage over there. So we can't put them there and also concerns for the flood plain. So he's going to give a rough estimate, uh, to me for if we were to set something up in like where they are right now, but build a ramp. So this is for conversational purposes. Ed and I talked about that yesterday as well. And I'll present that to the board and see if that's a capital item that you guys want to entertain in the future. Uh, the business park, Park Road. Uh, if you haven't, if you haven't been through there, C M P has put the poles in and run the power. And a couple of the customers are already hooked up. Pretty excited about that. Skiabi Drive, it's also been completed, you know, that little portion to make it so you can access the two back lots. Highway Department finished that. Winter sand bids were posted. And then lastly, the fire department mini pumper R F P was posted today. So that's what I got.
Any questions with Tom Allen? Slight man item.
I can do it, I can do it on this one. I can ask my question.
I didn't see you. Slight man, slight bad word. You, what, how would you wanna handle?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, on transfer station, um, have the bids gone up for the baler yet?
They have not gone up for the baler. Um, we've actually been looking into, I think you and Liz have had a conversation about this earlier, but there's some other, um, some other options that we weren't aware of before. For either leasing or renting, which give us a lot more options on the maintenance side of things and so forth. And there might be some cost savings there. So we were exploring that a little bit more before we threw that out the bid.
Are you talking about renting on a month to month basis?
Look.
Rather than like a lease purchase to buy it outright?
It, just getting numbers, yes.
I can tell you right now, I would not be supportive of that. That would end up being, um, an expense that I don't think we wanna go down. It was approved at town meeting to buy a baler and I don't know why now we're looking at leasing. I did hear rumors about that and actually I think it's a dumb idea.
Fair enough.
Any other segment?
The next question. Uh, what about the water and the bathroom at the transfer station and the windows? An update on those?
Sure. Uh, we've been, Ed's been working on, uh, the, the well. And then I know you've got the septic plans and you've been working forward on that. So I mean, that's been progressing forward. And as far as the windows, you're talking about the roll up?
Yeah.
For the drop off?
Yeah.
I know that, uh, one of the employees got that prepped and you got that ready to go too, do you not?
I do, I did check, just need to go to all the doors.
Yep, so the window doors, yeah.
For, for well thing, um, we got a little problem. We don't know where the land, like is, who's the land? And Richard Tippett's got in, he's trying to tell me if he can bring up the, the ward. So he's trying to go find his deed so he can show us where, where the land is. Here we put a well 100 feet away from the septic.
Shouldn't we know where our land is?
Yeah, but there's no state ground now.
Yeah, that's something Ed and I talked about a little earlier. We gotta find out exactly where that property lies.
He's, Richard is saying that they think they'll, they will give us a, these men or whatever, if they will put the well there, we'll be that one. He thinks he'll be on the road too long.
So what, have we got somebody coming in that does deep research that's gonna figure that out or what we don't?
We've gotta have, I mean, we've gotta have another conversation, Tom and I, see if she can help him figure it out, or us figure it out.
You kinda already have someone to do that, so. And it probably would make sense to hire a surveyor to come in and do that, especially if the property owner that a fight does this. It is the challenge.
Yeah, we gotta make sure what we do it. Not that I think Richard would do anything wrong, but.
As far as the sewer system, I have the guy there to do the design because he's saying that it can't just be a whole gang. So he designed a system with one pipe and some rocks and it's just a small city, there's only one person. He said, when you're that major, like the plan should become collapse, so.
It's a lot more, a lot simpler than I thought it was gonna be, so.
Any other? Go ahead.
In the section of Sam Row Hill and East Oxford, in Haven, uh, coming off Sam Row Hill, if you are attempting to cross on East Oxford. You have to be halfway out on the road before you can see either side. Can we trim a few tree limbs there?
East Oxford, Sam Row Hill.
Coming off Sam Row Hill. Yeah, like if you're going straight across to East Oxford.
Henry Johnson.
Like Henry Johnson, so, yeah.
Yep, okay.
There's also a big hole there, a washout on the downslope side of that intersection as well. Probably about four feet deep. Probably built in or something like that. And flat man, the other side too.
Okay.
And the other thing I had, uh, the reference, you, you put out that, uh, the state got money for the Route 26 project.
Yeah.
Um, I showed lots of that Wednesday when it was here, but we probably ought to look at, and I, I, I'm sure their time plays a couple of years out, but if we have to. Plans of extending either water or sewer on any of that stretch, maybe at least price it up to at least run it across. Because they're gonna buy you for at least five years when you're in the construction on that once it's done, so.
A good thought.
I'm assuming they'll, I mean, back about 15 years ago, when they were doing that project, they are meeting, I'm assuming they have another public info meeting on that and then they get ready.
What do they, where are they actually gonna lose?
I think it's a, pretty much the bulk of the Oxford Route 26 quarter there, so you get like $9 million worth.
It seems like that's been under construction.
For perpetual, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
That was another congressional grant, Collins, right?
Okay. Sounds good. Any other ends? Good. How about warrants 6, 7, 8, and 9? It must be ready.
That's the, your guidance. You can take your picture, Ed, and add that.
No.
There's always X. Now you're gonna be famous, Ed.
I think, say, you don't see that a little bit more. I don't know if you, it looks like you can see the color.
So you guys noticed anyone in? The foreign company who fixed the floor over there.
Neither knows.
Took it down, did they?
No.
Also, don't forget the sixth, next, uh, next Tuesday is voting for the school budget here in this room.
Are there absentee ballots for that?
Yeah, we set it up that people can come in, yeah. All right.
Figured out that, discuss that.
I keep not asked.
Bring that up.
What's that?
I was asked at the budget form that we went to, if we were gonna issue a statement, much like we did last time.
Mm-hmm.
And I just told them, I said that we, we would all.
And I just told them, I said that we, we would only issue a statement if we were all in agreement, and I wasn't sure if we were all in agreement, so.
I thought we were gonna discuss that.
Yeah, I just, I forgot.
Well, we can discuss it now, I guess, if you'd like to.
I'm, I'm in agreement with, I mean, it's not the best budget, but it's better than it was. Um, I think if I asked of them, um, remove the two million dollar line check, so I would be supportive of issuing a board statement. But we're in support of it, if we're in support of it. But again, I want to speak for everybody, so.
I think if you've got a, you know, they did do some work on it, but I was, I was at the meeting also, I'm sorry, can't remember if I have my name though, and the, uh, I deal with that seven million that the state's not giving you anything for, or they're not playing their position, a portion of it, because they feel we're over it. I didn't like my answers that I got on that up there, and, uh, I don't know. Oh, she's got one coming down. So, I don't know if I really want to come up and say that I'm all for it. Seven million dollars is a lot of money, but, you know, we pay a hundred percent. I'll go fifty million dollars, but. Well, I guess it could be worse, huh? I think you did a point, it could be worse.
So, I'll speak on it, too. Um, I did go to the meeting, uh, as well as Floyd and Dana. Um, some answers were okay, some answers were not, but I think, I thought about, a lot about it, especially the last few days. They, I do believe they did what they were asked to do. They took that two million dollars out, which is one thing that I think is what, um, destroyed.
Got them in trouble.
What the?
I think that's what got them in trouble.
Oh, I, I think it is, definitely. I mean, you don't ask for two million dollars and then say, well, I don't know what I'm gonna spend it on, so. And I did tell the superintendent that, um, after the vote, because I called her, and I talked to her. Um, but I think that they made a good effort to bring the budget down, and you're never going to have a budget that will do with a hundred percent of what's in it. And in order to get things moving, I think they got the message, I would like to see the budget pass, and I think that they have another year to work on it. Um, we were all quick to agree to sending a letter to have to support not approving the budget to the residents. And at first, I thought, um, you know, we can all state our own opinion, but I would not, I would be in support if we did issue a letter at this point, saying that, however it's worded, that, you know, we support their efforts and, um, in their new budget. I, I think if we honestly feel that they did make an effort, that I think we should reverse our decision. Um, after we took that vote, I regretted taking that vote, because I didn't feel that it was our place to issue that statement in the first place. But sometimes you have to think about what to do, and when you did it, and then, then you have to be willing to say, well, I shouldn't have done that. And I, I did regret taking that, taking the stand to, um, support sending a letter. But I would be in agreement in sending a letter, having the manager send one, but only if everybody else did, because it has to represent all of our opinions. But I will have no problem coming out publicly stating that I support.
I think if, if you don't come out against it, it really bore an idea.
That's the really way it works.
I mean, that's my, my take of it, but we can do what everybody wants to do.
Well, that's, I mean, that's where I stand. I, I don't, we shouldn't, my opinion, we shouldn't put out a letter as a board unless everybody's in agreement. If everybody's not in agreement, I don't pay with that.
Yeah.
I made my statement to her that night.
Yeah.
Um, so I do, I'm good whichever way this goes. If, if any one person is not in agreement, I'm fine with that.
Well.
Kind of agree with what Dana's saying.
Okay. So.
I guess I just assume, just personally, um, I think we, when we did the vote, I mean, it's something that's normally, that in my time on the board, or anytime I sit in that audience, watch the board, they, we were never really done, so, um, but I think if, when asked, I can, I think I can justify why we sent that letter, but I would be in disfavor of just letting the taxpayers go. I kind of agree that us not saying anything kind of says that they dealt with the issue, and just let, get a normal vote on the budget as a standing.
So, are we good with that, that we're not gonna do it? Do we need to vote on that? Not really, I mean?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think just leaving, I mean, we've all stated our opinions.
Yeah, I think that's the. Maybe we got it there. All right. Guess we can, uh, move to executive session on the first round, Anna?
Do you want to vote anymore?
Ah, yes, I would think that would be a heck of an idea.
I make a motion, we sign one, six, seven, eight, and nine.
I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
I don't want Wendy to yell out.
I want executive session.
I told you I'm not ready to make one.
Can you make a call in favor? About second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Oh, it's like packing a suitcase. Um, just break down, go get a, just know they're not gonna work. No real guarantee of, not at all.
You need to back those.